Welcome to the July 3, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Lieutenant Hessling, given the invocation. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day. God, we thank you for your mercy, your love, your grace. God, as a city and a community, nothing stays the same forever. And Father, as we look forward to change in the Fire Department, Father, I pray that you would just continue to work through Mike Hartman. Father, you would work in those that are underneath of him, that you would... Father, give them peace, courage to face change and new times, differing policies. God, I ask that you would just continue to support that department, help us as a community and leadership to support them as well. And Father, I just look forward to the servant that Hartman is and his continued leadership that I've experienced in my own life. Father, as we reflect on the tragedy of this past week, tragedy and hard times are nothing new to humans. Father, it's often quoted by many leaders, but there's a great maxim, "To never waste a tragedy." Father, help us to continue to learn and to grow from these hard times. Father, we pray for peace and healing for those that are affected. God, in all this, we ask for unity. Father, I pray that you would continue to work in each and every one of us, not just in this room, but in this entire city, to continue to lift each other up, to care for one another, to be good neighbors. Father, we're created in your image. And I pray for your mercy, your love, and your grace to be extended to us. We can extend it to others and continue to move forward as the great city that you've created for us. God, we love you and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Well done. Thank you. Ascendively, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Lampe.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne. Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Con.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to switch up the schedule a little bit. We're going to be moving item six to right now. So this would be the approval for the agenda. And I'm going to bring this up real quick. The next item is to adopt the agenda. Does council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda?
Your Honor, yes, I have three items. I'd like to pull seven A and move it to the end of your mayor's section just out of respect for the time for the Police and Fire Department that are here. I'd like to have eleven B pulled and to have it basically tabled so we can have an in-depth on reason of the placement of the four stop signs and to promote better understanding of the reasons for these placements. And also to pull seventeen T in asking for more information regarding the Wash Bay to be brought forward to council next weekend in depth.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion? I apologize. We're kind of off course right now. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? There we go.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampe.
Second.
Second by Gordon. Is there any discussion? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries as amended with all ayes. All right, so now I'm going to go to the mayor's section. All right, so before we do the vote on the fire chief, I'd like to address a few points regarding this week's tragic incident at Hy-Vee and the information shared last week in a press release by the Muscatine Humane Society. First, the Hy-Vee tragedy response. The recent act of violence at Hy-Vee perpetrated by an individual not from our community has deeply wounded the heart of Muscatine. We explicitly condemn this tragedy, which stands in contrast to our values of compassion and unity we hold dear. To all who witnessed this event, Hy-Vee and CBI Bank and Trust employees, customers, and community members, we share in the weight of your trauma and extend our deepest empathy. Your safety remains our utmost priority, and we are committed to ensuring Muscatine remains a place where all feel secure and valued. To Calista's children, Jonathan and Lillian, her parents, her boyfriend Robert, and her friends, please know that our community surrounds you with love, prayers, and continued support as you navigate this great loss. We lift everyone that has been affected up in prayer, asking for God's comfort to surround you and His strength to sustain you in the days ahead, granting you peace that transcends all understanding. To our amazing Public Safety family, all you guys present, we extremely... We are extremely grateful to the Muscatine Police Department, the Muscatine Fire Department, MusCom, Muscatine County Sheriff's Department, Amy Gold, Robert Young Center, and the Iowa State Patrol for your dedication to our safety, especially as you, the guardians of our state, county, and city, have had to endure such a horrific event. We continue to thank you for your service. Please share our gratitude with your spouses, significant others, and children who also bear the weight of your dedicated commitment to our community. As our Chief of Police, Tony Keys, who's not here tonight, has stated in an interview, "We take pride in this community and are committed to ensuring its safety." And finally, the last thing the chief wished to share, if he were here tonight, is this. "In spite of the horrific acts of evil that took place on June 30, the important thing to remember now is coming together and healing as a community." God bless. And the next item is just a response to Muscatine Humane Society. The City of Muscatine would like to thank the Muscatine Humane Society for its dedicated service to our community over the years. We've recently proposed a contract for animal control services for fiscal year 2025, 2026. However, the Muscatine Humane Society Board unanimously rejected the proposal. Chief Keys remain committed to fiscal responsibility, transparency, ensuring taxpayer funds are used responsibly with clear record-keeping and cooperation with the city and county attorney's offices. Muscatine Humane Society cited concerns about meeting these documentation requirements, among other reasons for their decision. In our commitment to maintaining local services and staying local, Chief Keys reached out to It Takes a Village, who graciously accepted the same contract that we offered to the Humane Society. It Takes a Village will also be conducting trap neuter release programs to support our community's animal welfare efforts pending council approval tonight. We are thankful for It Takes a Village partnership and look forward to working together to serve our community's animals. And Captain?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, citizens of Muscatine, and fellow first responders. On behalf of Chief Keys and the Muscatine Police Department, I wanted to echo the mayor's message and speak to you personally, not only about the events of this past Monday, which we all explicitly condemn, but more importantly, about the incredible display of love and support our community has shown for each other since. I am overwhelmed by how the community has come together with a common goal of healing. The examples of love and compassion are immeasurable, whether it's a Hy-Vee manager providing security for a customer, a CBI Bank and Trust executive personally holding the hand of an employee, or a first responder offering peer support to a member in need. Our community has shown up with professionalism, dedication, and a deep sense of purpose to heal one another. To Calista's family, as a community, we stand with you in your time of grief. We envelope you in our love and support you, and will continue to pray for you during your healing. Please remember, we are here for you, forever bonded with you, and with the strength of our Savior, Jesus Christ, we will overcome this tragedy. Collectively, we will find the strength to achieve peace. On behalf of my fellow first responders, I want to thank our city staff and the broad Muscatine community. With your continued dedication and support, we stand united with one common mission, to provide security and safety to this community. I personally feel blessed to be part of this work, and as the mayor stated earlier, and on behalf of Chief Keys, we take pride in this community and are committed to ensuring its safety. Thank you.
All right, and next, what we are going to do is move seventeen A as Councilmember Lewis requested. So this item, a request to approve appointment of fire chief for the City of Muscatine Fire Department effectively July 3, 2025. And if this moves forward, the swearing-in of the fire chief will take place following approval. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Brockert. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. And with that being said, I'll have you up here, sir. If you would like to bring your family too, that'd be great.
Karen.
Isn't she lucky?
Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? I, Michael Hartman.
I, Michael Hartman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Of fire chief.
Of fire chief.
In the City of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the City of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter.
Or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to have you sign right here. And then what we'll do after that is I'll have all of you walk around on the front and shake everybody's hand. Then we'll get a picture, okay? All righty, take a walk around. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, we'll do it several here. Count three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thanks, Kevin. All right. Next item, is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? And this would be an example, if anybody has questions about Claraback, now would be the time to talk about that, not when it gets to the zoning process. Just so if it has to do with Claraback Project Now, now's the time to speak. Name and address. We're going to give you three minutes.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out to Green Acres and talking to us residents. And the four councilmembers that came out, it really meant a lot that, you know, you guys took time out of your busy day to come and talk to us about our issues of what we're having with the through street. With that being said, the only thing that I would like to talk about is...
Name and address.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kirk Sears, 1914 Green Acres. Is... Has the council came up with any other ideas of an entrance and an exit? And I would like to hear from the developer tonight if they have came up with any ideas as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Gina, name and address. Two at a time. Uh-oh.
I'm Gina Othmer, and I'm at 1915 Green Acres. And I've spoke before, and I don't have anything new to present. I do, like Kirk, want to thank you guys for coming out and seeing our street and our neighborhood as it is. And I think maybe when it was presented to you originally and not just on paper, but when you saw the land, you saw it from the Claraback side and not from Green Acres. And so it was beneficial. So thank you for having taken the time, you know, to see it from our perspective and what it would do to our nice little neighborhood. So again, I just want to repeat, like, our concerns. Making Green Acres a through street, connecting Folium to Cedar, it is a big deal. It's a very narrow street. Lots of cars are on the street already. It's just cause for concern. It's not... It was never meant to be a through street. And so changing it, I... It just... I don't know. The logic doesn't make sense to me and to a lot of us. I know there's a lot of talk and there's concern with overall traffic in the city and trying to alleviate and fix those problems. And I'm on board with that, and that's super. But I don't think this will be helping that. I think it will be causing more congestion, not just on Green Acres, but it'll be causing more problems exiting what would be, what, West Bay onto Cedar Street. I just... I don't see it helping the already congestion that's there. So again, like Kirk, I mean, what else can be done? This isn't the only possibility, connecting Folium to Cedar via Green Acres. There's other options available for this development. And I know this is the easiest, and I'm sure it's probably the cheapest, but I don't think it is... I don't think it makes the most sense, and I don't think it's what's right for that area. One of my major points is, these are going to be nice houses. These are, you know, $300,000 to $500,000 homes. They want privacy. They don't want a through street. They don't want people zooming by their houses. They would like privacy. They want a cul-de-sac. We would like to keep our neighborhood intact and as-is. And I'm sure West Bay is the same way. So I don't know. I just would like more conversation about other possibilities rather than just quickly moving forward with this. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Gina.
Kim Sears, 1914 Green Acres. The one thing that I would like to say is we've talked a lot about traffic and the throughway and how we can't be sure that it's going to work, that we can't be sure that we're going to have traffic issues or speeding issues going up and down our narrow street. But the other thing I wanted to mention, which I did email a lot of you about, was kids and our narrow street. There will be middle-income families, higher-income families moving into the New Edition. They'll have sidewalks and wide streets and so forth. And they will then want to walk, probably. We have high school kids that walk through there. It used to be a pathway. If it's now an addition, they'll walk on sidewalks and so forth. Then, when they get to our street to go to middle school, elementary school, whichever way they're walking, they're going to be walking in two-way traffic because there are no sidewalks. And I don't want sidewalks, don't get me wrong, because that would take half of my yard up clear up past my flagpole. I wouldn't have a front yard. But I would like you all to please consider kids who are walking back and forth to school and in traffic because right now it's a dead-end street. You know, you have to watch for cars backing up and so forth, but you're also not having to look at two-way... Excuse me, two-way traffic. And it's just something that I'm concerned about. Now, if kids are walking in the street, okay, that's bad enough to get to Folium or the New Edition High School. You also then, if cars are coming, guess where they're going to walk? In our yards. What if an accident happens? What if they trip and fall? What if... Who's responsibility is that? If they're on our property and there's an accident of some sort? They break an ankle, they do something silly, you know? Then who's to say? I think that's our job as a city to protect those kids and not leave them just hanging in a traffic on a two-way street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Is there any follow-up with council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would like to read my statement, please.
You bet.
On Friday, June 27, I met with some of the neighbors on Green Acres Drive. I can see why these people feel that a through street isn't a good idea. Even with the 22 households that routinely use this street, excuse me, it's very narrow with vehicles parked on both sides and shows signs of wear that come with old age. And I know about old age. I'm sorry. I would like to hit the brakes on the roadway portion of the proposed plat. A group of stakeholders, including the developer, Realtor, city staff, public safety, and a couple of representatives of the Green Acres neighborhood could get together to reach a compromise solution that would work for everyone. Everyone would have a... He's skin in the game, if you will. I don't have a problem with the zoning portion of this project. It's the roadway I have an issue with. And I'm excited at the prospect of new homes being built in Muscatine with, you know, that goes without saying. We all need new housing. We agree on that. What we don't need to do is upset the complexion of an established neighborhood. None of us on this dais live on Green Acres. It is our duty as public servants to listen to those who do. Yes, we have traffic overload in this area, Muscatine. When these neighborhoods were platted in the 1960s, kids walked to school. There were two junior highs, one on Kindler and the other on Iowa Avenue. McKinley School was a fraction of the size it is now, and the high school was at 901 Cedar Street. Only country kids rode the bus, and the only time a parent showed up was to take their child to an appointment or other event, including probably meeting a counselor or principal. That wasn't a good time for the kid. Our current situation has been created by the location of three large schools close together and the change in culture of how kids get to and from school over the years. Kids who walk to and from school are now transported by private vehicle or bus, often resulting in gridlock and a traffic nightmare. I'm afraid making Green Acres the relief valve will only create more problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments, council? City Mr.?
Yeah, I would like to take a little bit of time here and give you a little bit of explanation of why we got to this concept of connecting Green Acres. When we initially met back in, I guess it would be early January of 2025, newer to the city, and having, coming from an engineering firm background, the city requested that Green Acres be connected to Claraback. There was a proposal on the table from Mr. Hackett for that development that went into a cul-de-sac. The city requested that as part of a lot of initiatives and work from not only our Public Works, our city engineer, and our planner to connect that roadway for several reasons, and I'll go through those in here in a second. That was a push for us to financially support the project. The end of Green Acres is a dead end with no cul-de-sac or no hammerhead turnaround. When we consider the public safety component of Green Acres, there is concern of, A, getting a fire truck to the end of that, getting it turned around, or an ambulance through the end of that. That is a 27-foot-wide street, curb-to-curb on the backside of the curb, which is a standard SUDAS allowable on a residential roadway. That ability to get our emergency equipment down that road and get it turned around if needed is very limited right now. That's one reason. The second reason is the way that we have sanitation service, we have to drive up one side of a dead end, in any dead end. We have to drive up one side, pick up the cans, back out, and then we have to back, all the way back up, and pick up the other side. From a longevity perspective and roadway use, I have concern with that because we are traveling that road twice as much as necessary to pick up our sanitation. That same concept could be going with the way that we maintain and operate Public Works for snow removal. We're driving up that street twice as many times with those bigger trucks than is absolutely necessary if it was a through street. If it's a through street, the sanitation truck would go up and then turn around and come back down. And the same thing with the snowplow. It would go up to Claraback and... It would go up to Clareback and use that turnaround cul-de-sac in Clareback and come back down and minimize the amount of times that we have vehicles going over that roadway. In addition to that, the electric, the electricity services and all the utility would, would be in a mode where we can connect that and would operate a lot more efficiently through our electrics and our sanitation services by the connectivity. Another, another impact that we have is when we talk about snow removal in the past, it was real easy to push all of the snow to the very north end of Green Acres. That won't be feasible now. If somebody else owns that property and there's a residence, that would not be fair to that resident at the end of that street to pile all that snow at the very end. We're going to put it in their backyard. That creates a concern for us is trying to how we navigate through that. The, the last issue with the development is if we were to require the developer to put a hammerhead turnaround or even a cul-de-sac at the end of that Green Acres street, that is a different parcel and that would actually take two lots away from Mr. Hackett, which I believe would be unfair for a developer, for us to require him to do that and make it financially more difficult for him to hit, make, to literally impact his investment into that property. So I really wanted to make it very clear that there was a proposal for a cul-de-sac. The issue with that is the connectivity. When we do talk about all the roadwork, and let's face it, the roadwork up in that area at some point is going to have to be upgraded. That connectivity is going to be very satisfying when we go through construction projects and widening projects that we will have to do probably in the future at some point down the road due to the load of traffic that goes in and out of that school. If all those streets were dead ends, it would make our ability to get those folks in and out of their houses during a construction zone absolutely more difficult than we need to and, and people wouldn't like that. So there was a lot of factors that went into that decision based on our own city engineer and our own Public Works staff, as well as the engineers designing that project, that that's why we felt it was best to connect that street and improve those factors rather than ignore them and continue with what I would call the, the, the non-compliant dead ends, if you will, in today's world. With all due respect, when they designed that street back in the nineteen sixties, if it was really truly intended to be a dead end, we as a city didn't require that. It should have probably required a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead turnaround to meet those needs and those safety needs. So I just think it's, it's very clear that the city staff was pushing for that connection only because of those items that I've just discussed. And I understand the concern of the neighborhood. We put traffic, I would say slowing down, traffic calming techniques and that with, with connecting those, not on a straight-through path, but more of a curve and a stop sign so that we could really limit the way that, and the, and the traffic speeds in that neighborhood. And we feel it's the best plan moving forward.
Thank you, City Administrator. Councilmember Lewis?
I just want to recognize Mrs. Sears regarding the kiddos. I totally understand what you're talking about. I live on Folium. I know how kids walk. I did come over and speak with Gina and was able to look through the neighborhood. There is a path where kids have been walking and I don't think connecting the road or not connecting the road is going to eliminate kids walking on your, on your street or on the grass. I don't, I don't see that as an issue. It's like it's going to happen. So somebody falling or tripping, it's not going to, it's going to increase it maybe because there's going to be more kids there. But I think that kids are going to be kids. And they're going to walk where the easiest path is. They aren't going to take the street and go up to, to Folium or go up to Logan or Hauser to get onto Folium. They're going to continue to the path that they, the easiest path, right? So I, I want, I want to recognize that I definitely understand what you're talking about kiddos. I know it's like I've had issue. I live off of, just right across from the park on Folium. So the intersection of Logan and Folium, kids jaywalk. And it's, I, I can tell you, it gives me heartburn every time school lets out. The only thing that's, that I have to say is a breath is that I know it only, it only, it's only for two short periods during the day. And it's like trying to figure out how do we mitigate that? You know, it's like we've got, you know, four-way stop there. Does that help? No, not really because kids still want to walk, jaywalk. But I want, I just want you to understand. I hear what you're saying regarding the kiddos walking, regarding personal liability if somebody trips and falls on your property. It could happen now. I mean, there's no sidewalks. They could trip and fall in your yard. So it's just, just realize that I, I understand what you're saying. So, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Not, not at this time. Thank you though.
Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Lampy?
Yeah, I agree. And I'll echo Councilman Brockert's comment about the fact that, and I, as I've talked with just about everybody in the neighborhood, I think I've expressed the, the fact that, you know, we as a council, we understand those concerns. We've heard your concerns. Well done. You've been very persistent and very vocal about that. So well done with that. And that's really what democracy and everything is about. So keep doing it. Secondly, the fact that, you know, we're not going to go anywhere. Yeah, we've going to, you know, develop a plan and we're going to move forward, but that doesn't mean that we're just going to set it and forget it and walk away. So if this does not work, I'm confident that you will continue to keep us abreast and aware of how it does or does not work. So can continue to do that. But also you'll have my assurance that as long as I sit in this seat, you'll have a voice and we'll continue to work on, hey, if this is not working, what's another plan? How do we adjust this thing? How do we make it better for the neighborhood, for the city? I think we as a city, we do have to come together and, and address some of these overall traffic concerns around some of the schools, although it doesn't directly relate to this development. There is a traffic issue that we have. You know, we are in a small city, so our rush hour is really about rush ten minutes, you know, and stuff. So, you know, as the city grows, yeah, some of those things are going to be, you know, ride right along with our growth of our city. But we as a city council and we as city leaders, that's our challenge. That's what the tension that we get to manage is how do we come together and understand that traffic? How do we listen to our citizens and, you know, do what we can in mitigating those traffic concerns? So rest assured, we have heard you. We will continue to work on this and we will continue to listen to you and do everything we can to address the traffic and make it fair for everybody and as, as good as we possibly can for everybody. So thank you.
Any other comments, counsel? Yes, Councilmember Osborne?
I'll be brief. Echoing what, what has been said here, I, I would like to also say that we need to work to come up with something that's, that's fair for everybody, listening to what everybody's saying and talking to a few. There's reasonable requests on the table. There's some reasonable solutions that we've talked. And I will vote for the zoning changes tonight, but that has nothing to do with the topic we're talking right now. We, we need to find a way to make this work. It's an, it's an important first type of development that the city's been trying to attract for a long period of time. It being the first makes it critically important. It also makes it critically important that we do it right for the city and also for the folks that are in the neighborhood. We don't want to do it wrong and then, and then have that ripple through future projects that are similar to this. So I'm committed, just as Don, as the dean, and I know everyone on the council that I've talked to, we don't know the answers yet, but we need more discussion to make this happen right and fair for everybody. That's it.
Thank you. And Gina, just so you know, on the seventeenth is the third reading, so you'll be able to come load it at that time, okay? Be ready to go, okay? Any other items, counsel? Okay. We do appreciate the, the questions, by the way, so thank you. All right. Now we're at the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's sole request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items ten A through B, items eleven A, C, D, E, F, items twelve A and B, and items thirteen A through E, and item fourteen A with bills totaling six million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and forty-two cents?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries as amended with all ayes. All right. All right, and we have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is public hearing fifteen A is a public hearing to consider the vacation surplus and deeding over to the adjoining property owner the undeveloped right-of-way of Robie Avenue bisecting parcels one three zero three four five six zero one six, one three zero three four five six zero one two, and one three zero three four five six zero zero five. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon.
I thought this was a public hearing.
Oh.
Public hearing, Brad.
Oh goodness, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I apologize. I had the wrong notes in here. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, just a second. Thanks, Kevin. Just give me one second. Okay. I apologize, everybody. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next is fifteen B is a public hearing on proposed amendment to the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich?
Second.
And a second by Conard. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right. Seventeen B, first reading of an ordinance to vacate and deed undeveloped right-of-way between parcel one three zero three four five six zero five five, parcel one three zero three four five six zero one six, and parcel one three zero three four five six zero one two on Robie Avenue to adjoining property owner. This is public hearing number A, or letter A. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with counsel? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution to approve urban renewal plan amendment for the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. This is public hearing B. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with counsel? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is D is a first reading of an ordinance for the division of taxes, taxes levied on taxable property in the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area pursuant to section four zero three point one nine of Code of Iowa. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public or counsel? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is E is a request to waive third reading and approve ordinance on second reading amending ordinance number nine one one, nine one dash zero four one zero, granting Interstate Power and Light Company, also known as Alliant Energy, its successors and assigns the right and franchise to acquire, construct, erect, and maintain and operate a natural gas distribution system in the city of Muscatine, Muscatine County, Iowa for the purpose of distributing, supplying, and selling natural gas to the city and its inhabitants by increasing the franchise fee five percent. Is there a motion to waive the third reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert?
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public? Or counsel?
Well, I just think we should point out that the current franchise fee is three percent, so we're not raising it five percent.
It's going up to five percent.
We're just being raising to five percent, which, you know, if that's okay, Mayor, to point that out.
You bet, of course. Any other comments? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved estimate with all ayes. Next item is F is a request to waive the third reading and approve on second and final reading an ordinance to vacate and deed undeveloped right-of-way bisecting parcel one three zero three four five six zero one four on Robie Avenue to adjoining property owner. Is there a motion to waive the third reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Conard. Is there any discussion with the public? Or counsel? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved estimate with all ayes. Next item is G, resolution approving execution of a deed for the vacated undeveloped Robie Avenue right-of-way to the adjoining property owner. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or counsel? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H is a second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Muscatine, Iowa, which is a nine point two five acre area located between the southern end of Clareback Lane and the northern end of Green Acres Drive. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public or council regarding the zone, zoning? Here or none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Second reading of an ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is A is a third and final reading of an ordinance adding section 16, this is Community Cats Trap Neuter Release, to Title VI, Chapter 8 of City Code. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Louis. Is there any discussion with the public? What about council?
I have comments.
You bet.
Peggy?
No, you first, John.
Okay, good enough. I've never said that wild feral nuisance cats have caused the extinction of an entire species of bird. Wild feral nuisance cats are a nuisance to property owners. They're the most prolific predator that we have in our city. It's unfair to say some cats need licenses while wild feral nuisance cats don't need A trap neuter and release program, cats brought into the city, who knows from where, whatever, a trap neuter and release program may very well wind up increasing the population of cats in our community. When we adopt this, I assume, we probably are going to adopt this ordinance, I think it's unfortunate if we are, but, you know, we're going to allow people in our city to home and care for 10, 15, 20 feral cats, wild feral nuisance cats, without showing any responsibility for it, which I think is unfortunate. I've had the number presented to me by, I think, a pretty reputable source that we could have as many as like 5,000 cats in this city. We have 172 licensed, 172 licensed cats in this city. I have no idea why we even license cats. They're going to run and be free to do whatever in our city, whether it be a home cat, a cat that's in a home that is not following the rules the right way, so that's another subject to take up here. I suppose whether or not we even have cat licensing, which we shouldn't. How many people have I talked to? I don't know. You got a cat? Yeah, do you have it licensed? No, stays in the house all the time. So cat licensing is, it really doesn't, I'm not sure how closely it follows the trap neuter and release program, although there are going to be some correlations because a wild feral nuisance cat certainly does not have to be licensed, council. And voting to adopt this code means that we are treating people who want to own the cat responsibly unfairly. Okay? I have no intention, obviously, to vote to change this code. This code is going to be ineffective and it's unfair. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thanks, Mayor. Let me just take us on the brighter side of TNR, John. So hopefully, we will pass tonight. It Takes a Village did honor our request to sort of delay things this year and previous years. So one thing I would ask of this, because is some education to roll out over the next few months to the community to keep it simple and brief as to what happens and such, if it's a true feral cat or if it's a licensed pet, what happens? So not like day one, because today is day one, probably, but just take that in consideration if we can come up with some sort of messaging and communication to educate folks, so. That's what I just wanted to bring up. It's just another tool in the tool belt, like I said. This is not the end-all-do-all-for-all feral cats, but it does, it will help. We've all done our studies, John, in different ways, you know? So I just wanted to bring that up as I, as an ask, is this educate people, so, and working with the animal control officer and the team, that would be helpful.
Any other comments, council?
Let me hear.
Yep.
Go ahead, John.
Yep, you're good. Councilmember Osborne?
I'd like to address an issue that some of the things I said at council last time have been misrepresented. I never said that, to the folks that sent us a lot of dozen emails, I never said that your emails don't count, and I never said that 300 cats were utilized last year. Didn't say those things, never gave close. Those things are misrepresentations of what I've been saying by It Takes a Village. As we look to move forward, in the relationship between It Takes a Village and the city, we need to be accurate. We need to stop misrepresenting things about council, and this is not the first time this has happened, and other council members, they need to stop. It's hard to trust information that we're asking for to be truthful when things are happening. That's the last time I'll say anything about it, just to move forward and be more truthful in the process.
Thank you, councilmember. City administrator?
Yeah, to address Councilwoman Gordon's, in my conversations with Chief Keys, there is a plan to do that. I do not want to put anybody on the spot tonight on what that looks like, but we have a plan to roll out some information at some point in the near future about what that looks like, so. It has already been planned, it's just not ready to roll out yet.
I appreciate that. I mean, it can't be day one, but get it on the list.
We'll have it.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Louis?
I just, I have to echo what Councilwoman Gordon and Nadine, Councilwoman Nadine said said last time we met, is this is just a tool and toolkit. If in two years, we don't see this working as council, we can go back in and change it. I see trap neuter and release as if I have a cat that's feral, it's been trapped neuter and released, and it's still a nuisance, I have the all authority to call the city and say, this cat's not behaving, it needs to go away, and that the city will respond to that. So this is just a chance to help hopefully another toolkit, or a tool in our toolkit, to help mitigate some of this, and I don't know how many feral cats we have in this city at the moment. I can tell you, I've seen three or four at my house. I have six dogs, so cats don't come around my house very often. I love animals. I agree with John, there's responsible pet owners and there's non-responsible. We see plenty of dogs running around that are either not licensed, not taken care of, and we have to figure out how to take care of those as well. So thank you for bringing us another piece of our toolkit that we can use to hopefully mitigate this, and I always tell people in the city, if you want us to hear something, call us. Facebook is great when you just want to shoot the breeze, but we don't always hang on Facebook. As a matter of fact, I've kind of taken my step back off of it because I feel like it's like, it becomes a bunch of misinformation. So if you have things that you need us to hear, call us. Our phone numbers are out there on the website. I can tell you, my number that is out there has been my number for years. So if you call and I don't answer, it's because I'm working usually, but I will call you back, so, thank you.
Any other comments, council? Here or none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Nay.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with six ayes and one nay. Next item is J is a resolution setting a public hearing for July 17, 2025 regarding a development agreement with TNT Hacket Development Group LLC, including annual appropriation, tax increment payments. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion as it pertains to setting the public hearing council? Here or none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution awarding a contract to Needham Excavating in the amount of $183,480 for the dredge spoils relocation trenchless pipe installation. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Councilmember Conard?
I have a question. No, no, Mr. Steinman or Mr. Coon can answer this. I'm a little, we're city admin, too. A little perplexed on this whole activity. I thought we were kind of slowing this down to understand what we were going to do, if the dredge wasn't going to work anymore, when the dredge is coming back. I didn't, I thought we were pausing on tearing the buildings down where this is going to be located, and I see we tore the buildings down, and now we're moving forward with this dredge line. Are we even going to have the dredge to hook this line to? I, I don't know where we're at on the whole dredge boat, or why would we, do we even need to move this line or put a line in if we're not going to use that dredge? Or does anybody have an update on that?
I will take my best, I think John's online, I don't know if he's able to hear us and respond.
If so, you're on mute, John.
John Cook, can you hear us? Two dredges, unmute, two dredge projects.
True. I'll try and give you the best information I can give you that I know of. The site plan, or the site for the dredge spoils is still moving forward. Regardless if we have a dredge or if there is another dredge, we would like to have a place to put the dredge spoils so that they can dry out. That site won't be ready this year, and we have some dredging we need to do, but we are going to wait until after the fishing tournament and the triathlon to do that, and temporarily, we're going to have to put them at the very upriver side of the park because the line won't be in to put it to the dredge site. So we'll have to continue to dredge that area from time to time regardless of what the, I guess, what the years, how many years we can go by without dredging. We've got it to a point where it's really pretty passable coming in the entryway, but not underneath the docks. So our plan is to, upon completion of getting the dredge, and they've had some issues with some of those components, getting the dredge repaired, as soon as that's repaired, we'd like to temporarily get underneath those and be prepared to go as soon as we can after the tournament, so we're not putting that at the very far end and impacting that event. And then the plan is to bag them at the very end, or the north, or the upriver side of that park this year, and then remove them in the spring, and then from there on, they would go to the dredge site.
But is this something we're going to utilize moving fo, I mean, the seawall, or whatever the company was that did the first part, didn't use a dredge? I mean, they scooped it up and hauled it away.
We, we can continue to use that process, the problem is it's rather expensive, and I think one of the things that we, we can do it internally to get it up there, I think a little bit cheaper than hiring somebody to do it all the time is the goal or in the plan. I don't want to give you any estimate at this point, I can work on that for you, but I wouldn't want to, like, take a guess.
Thank you. And then about the building, too. Was there any, any update regarding the building that was torn down? Were we waiting on that, or just kind of making a wave for?
I can give you a little bit of update of the timing of this particular piece, so the reason that we're moving forward with this piece right now is to meet the timeline for the lumber loft development. They are going to start earthmoving here shortly, I'm told. If we wait till we're ready to put this pipe in, we're going to tear up what they just put in. So we're going to be each other's way. So the agreement that we had was to work with them to try to get this piece in now to do our boring underneath Second Avenue, or Second Street, abandon it each end, and then we can come in and tie on later. But if we do all that work, when they're, after they're done, when our timetable is right, we're going to tear up everything that they just put in new as far as their entrance, as far as retaining walls, things like that. So that's the reason we're doing this. Yes, we're taking a bit of a risk, but if we don't do it this way, we're going to screw up their timeline, and that's going to probably cost us, due to the development agreement that we've signed. As far as the buildings that are on the site, those, I'm not sure what the status of those are to be demolished, but I know that those were out to bid, so.
They're already gone.
They're gone? I didn't notice.
Yeah. No, that's good, Jody. Yeah, they're gone, I drove by.
Does that, does that help, or is that, does that answer what you're asking? Just as long as we utilize it after we install it, that's our plan, yeah.
It does make sense to have it, you know, going with it, but Councilmember Gordon has a question.
Well, I think Director Steinman answered it. I mean, my question was the tie-in to lumber lofts, because we have the dredging going on at the harbor, that's paused temporarily, and then we have the dredge soil that's currently at lumber loft that has to be removed, or some debris. But the pipe has to get in place. I understand what you just said, and that really makes sense, Brian.
Yeah, the material that's on site now stays there, they want that material.
Okay, because they need to lift it about six weeks.
Well, they're going to use it for landscaping, things like that, so they, we may agree with them. We've done everything that we have told them we would do, but we need to get this pipe in to get out of their way. That's the point of this.
For future use.
Well, yeah, the pipe's for future use, yes.
Cool, thank you. That's the tie-in I was missing, so.
Any other discussion, council? Questions, concerns? Here or none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is L is a resolution approving awarding a contract to Benke Construction, Inc. in the amount of $28,000 for the SLU Lift Station Upgrade Project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert and a second by Louis. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is M is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $109,188 to Compass Minerals for Road Salt. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Gendrich. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is O is a request to approve the Greenwood Cemetery Retail Sales Agreement to Heritage Monuments of Iowa in the amount of $350 per memorial marker stone sold with a five-year agreement period being proposed. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Request is approved with all ayes. All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is O is a request to approve the Greenwood Cemetery Retail Sales Agreement to Heritage Monuments of Iowa in the amount of $350 per memorial marker stone sold with a five-year agreement period being proposed. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is P is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Ed Morris Automotive Group of Muscatine in the amount of $42,657.30 for a half-ton pickup truck, pickup for park maintenance. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is Q is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Jabs Construction in the amount of $64,337 for the purpose of completing lead hazard mitigation and healthy homes repairs under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Grants. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with council?
Can we get a brief update on the progress here, Jody?
If you both wanna come up with your.
Probably take care of these next two topics.
Probably the next three. Jody Royal Goodwin, Community Development, Development Director. Mayor Council, I'm gonna let Arthur Bell, our Lead Hazard Programs Manager, address that. Awesome.
Good evening, Arthur.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. We've had a little bit of a slow startup for the program in terms of getting started just in general. The intake process, getting that part, uh, particular down as well as getting the reviews for the properties. That is the last part that we're waiting for. That should be done in a couple of weeks. And as you can see, we have a couple of properties already going to bids and have been awarded. So it's kinda where we're at this moment.
What was the timeline of the original grant? Was it for like another year? I mean, the program had sort of a life cycle.
Yeah, the, we have, as of now, we have about two and a half years left.
Okay.
In the program, so, for both grants.
And this, all the, this is all covered under the grant, this expense?
Yes.
Yes.
Rants and much, yes.
Great.
Great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well done.
All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All, all opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is R is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to interiors and more in the amount of $42,510 for the purpose of completing lead hazard mitigation and healthy homes repairs under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Grant. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Lampy.
A second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with council?
And I just wanna make sure, there was no attachment, at least on mine. This is still going through the grant, correct? It's not paid for out of Cindy's money.
Yep, that's what I understood, right?
Yep. Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes. Question. I don't know. Um, is there any danger in us losing this grant because of the general political environment that we are currently living under?
At this point, we haven't heard any rumblings that this is one of those funds that are at risk. It's been committed, it's under contract. They've not tried to pull these funds back. Actually, they just released a NOVO for another round of these grants yesterday or the day before.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is S is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Jabs Construction in the amount of $25,025 for the purpose of completing lead hazard mitigation and healthy homes repairs under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Grant. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second, Conard.
And a second by Conard. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. And we pulled T, we're going to U. Is a request to approve a five-year concession operations agreement for the Musco Sports Center with Fresh Idea Foods, Inc. Vander Vending. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Conard.
And a second by Conard. Is there any discussion with council?
Just real quick, Rich, is five years typical for these kinda contracts? I can't remember and was not timely in looking back at other concession contracts we've had.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Typically, the first agreement is three years, but this group has been with us for three years already.
Okay.
At Kentstein Park, so five years. We'd love it to get them under contract. If they're not happy, if we're not happy, then there's definitely terminators in the contract to release.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Director Kleins while he's up there? Anything? Okay.
Nah, we'll wait until he well sets down.
Do you want a quick little update on the dome?
I would. Absolutely.
I know, I know Councilmember Lewis was gonna ask, so we'll just get it right there. So the synthetic field has arrived and it will be installed next week. Should be completed by the end of the following week. With that, the air handler units, the ten-by-twenty foot, two air handling units will be installed at the site. After that, we're thinking late July, the first week of August, they'll bring the dome in and then they'll start the inflation. That'll take about two weeks. We're still targeting towards, fingers crossed, Labor Day weekend as we're trending towards. We are starting the scheduling, finishing it. Nick has been brought on board as the Assistant Director and he's been heavy at work at the people who have contacted to schedule with us. And so now we'll start making the inside look really ramped up and putting the branding in there with the concessions and Coca-Cola and the rules boards and the recognition boards and finishing all those touches. We will do a grand opening sometime, probably in September, is what we're thinking. The first large event scheduled will be on the 13th of September and that'll be a Musco grand opening for their employees and a small soccer tournament. So that's where we're trending right now. Anybody has any questions, citizens, council, anybody, please call us, stop in, ask questions. We'd love to share everything we have. Any other questions for that?
Camera. I know there was a camera that was gonna show the progress of that, whether it be time lapse or live. Is that camera live?
I do not believe that is live. The engineering firm owns and operates it, but they will be giving us feeds to it, was my understanding. We can check and see if we can share that.
Yeah, cause I think, you know, just the questions that I've got, if we can share that live feed out, I think that the community is really excited about this building and being able to share that out and have them watch this as it progresses now with the turf and the inflation and stuff, I think that would be really cool if we could get that camera up and running.
Absolutely. We'll check and that is a time lapse. We'll let Administrator Morrison know and he'll get with you on that.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Gordon?
Just an ask maybe is at some point, whether it's an in-depth in September or something, I'd like to have the standard operating procedures, your procedural manual, all that sort of presented to us to go through all the processes that are gonna take place. Don't, yeah. Closing, opening, I mean, it, this is the time we should be creating the standard operating procedures and I assume that they're started.
Yep, I will share with, yep, I will share with you. The, the really unique thing about this dome, and I think I've told councils before, definitely the commission, is there is not one process that we're not gonna be able to overlap with existing processes within the parking rec system. So the processes will be transitioned over and Nick is working on that.
Yeah, they're a little more, they're all unique. Your aquatic center has different processes as opposed to the golf course and the soccer. So, and I know we don't usually have it in-depth in August and next week's is a little too soon for you, but I'd like to see it or send it to us for review.
We will certainly work through the administrative with that.
I'll send a request.
Anything else, Mayor?
Any other questions? Well, I would like to recognize Gina. She used to be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission and was part of all of this, helping out with getting this dome going as well, so. Thank you so much, Director Kleins. All in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is V is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Stivers Ford in the amount of $130,000 for the purchase of two 2025 Ford Inceptor, Interceptor Police Vehicles. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is W. Request to approve memorandum of agreement with Thomas Agron, Agron, Andrew. What's that? That was my, that was my guess, yes. To create street murals as part of the Ignite Vitality Mulberry Project. Thank you, Jody. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with council?
Yes. Just, is there a committee that's approving these murals before they're painted? Or how does that all go about on selecting what's gonna be painted and making sure that fits within the community?
Mayor, Council. So first, there'll be some community engagement. They're gonna talk, work with kids that, that go to Jefferson since they'll be in their neighborhood. Gather some of that in, that feedback as well as then some broader community in the Mulberry neighborhood. And then it will go through the public arts process. So, and then we'll come back here with, this is the proposal before we actually paint them. That is the plan.
So come back to council then?
Yes. And hopefully we have pretty pictures. Everybody's like, yay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. How long do they, do you expect them to last?
I don't have that answer right now.
Yeah, I didn't know if they're, are they gonna last one season or, you know, multiple seasons? How long will the murals last as we paint them and put them in place?
I do have a decent, an okay answer for that. I have a start of an answer. So three to five years is like the, how long we think. But it's not that it won't be without some touch-up and it has, and they're supposed to provide a maintenance plan for that.
Oh, that's even better. Okay.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is X. Request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Rydell Roofing, Inc. in the amount of $125,720 for the WRRF Maintenance Shop Roof Replacement. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted? We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert and a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is Y is request to enter into an agreement with TransUnion to provide TLOXP online search services for the Muscatine Police Department. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is Z. It's been a long time since we've had a Z. Don't you agree? Is a request to approve an agreement between the City of Muscatine and It Takes a Village Animal Rescue and Resources to support the city's provision of animal control services for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
And a second by Brockert. Is there any discussion with council?
I do have a question. I don't know, I, I think probably for Captain York, but or, or It Takes a Village, why, you know, chime right in, section four of the agreement. The vicious animals. The way I read this, and certainly feel free to, you know, straighten me out. That's why I'm asking the question, but if, if we have a vicious dog, or Courtney, okay, if we have a vicious dog that the police department says needs to be put down. But, so It Takes a Village has to agree to adopt that dog before it can be put down? Is that what this is saying? Or if they, if you don't adopt it, then it doesn't have to be put down? Or explain this to me here a little.
No, so this was already part of our, our prior agreement. If we deem that dog dangerous or dangerous dogs are not euthanized. Let me just clarify that. They have a special list they have to follow in order to remain in the city. Vicious dogs either have to be removed from the city or be euthanized. That statement in there just allows us the authority to deem that dog to be euthanized should we need to do so. And it would, it would limit them from exposure for that. We would take the responsibility for that euthanasia of that dog.
Okay. Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Courtney. Any other questions, council?
I just have a comment. I don't know if most of, I'm just, this is actually more to the public probably. I found out there's actually this really cool app that you can go to and I wish I could remember what the app's called right now, so I apologize. But it's like, it's like you play this little game and you actually adopt the dog from It Takes a Village. And you can adopt multiple and you can play this game. I, kids can even do it. It's so easy. I hooked my grandkids already up. So it's like as you're playing the game through chewy.com, it actually provides treats and food. And that food goes to that specific animal at It Takes a Village. So I thought it was really cool. So I encourage people to get plugged in and that kinda helps It Takes a Village and our, the animals and helps support that. So, thank you. Sorry.
Don't be sorry, you're good. All in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is A, double A. Request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for an amount not to exceed 28,000 to Stivers Ford for two K-9 squad vehicle upfits. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy, a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye? All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. And next item is BB. Discussion regarding the continued use of C Click Fix.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, really, for tonight's council, the discussion was really to be had about should we continue the use of C Click Fix? And in the meeting, the pre-meeting, there was a lot of discussion about there's value in that. I think the thing that I was looking for is we're, we can look at ways or maybe a different way to save some budgetary money here without trying to sacrifice the accountability and the tracking that, that is available C Click Fix. So in that discussion, Councilman Osborne had some really good comments. I think what I would ask of you is if there's something that you want to see in C Click Fix, and there's a lot of things that were discussed prior to this that we can use. If there's something you specifically wanna see, please let me know as we work through this and I come back to you at a later date with at least a modification to C Click Fix or another type of tracking ability that we have that might be more inexpensive, but we'll work on that. But I just wanted to open it up so you guys had the ability to give me your feedback as we process what we try to do and try to eliminate or minimize that cost if we can. So I don't really have a bunch of it. I was just more of a talking point of, of discussing that option earlier about alternatives or C Click Fix to try and save that $20,000 annual payment. And we can work through that.
Council, any feedback? Do you hold on to C Click Fix or any comments?
I would just, you know, contribute that I think the city administrator and staff should evaluate C Click Fix. You deal with it on a daily basis. If you can, you know, from my perspective, if you can come up with a better program, that's fine with me. I'd be glad to support that. Some faults and some good things about C Click Fix, but I'm not locked into C Click Fix. If you think you have a better way, you can convince me of that and save us money, then please do.
We can work on that.
Yeah, I like that. Councilmember Gordon?
I'd like to see case management. I don't care much for the cost of C Click Fix. I don't think we're using its full capabilities because of the tracking phases that it's going through. If we can do something a little better without putting a lot of additional time on our staff, that would be best. I'd like to see what happens internally, not just what happens to our customers' view. So I'm not as forgiving as John. Being the, the role that I play in other business, I wanna see what goes on behind the scenes. But if we choose not to do it, then I'm not opposed to that as a time, a cost savings. But to see how it works, I mean, behind the scenes before we have the final review. So I'd be welcome. I'd like to see it.
Absolutely.
I like what Councilmember Gingerich mentioned. You know, I, I don't wanna get too far into the weeds, but if you guys had like reports that you could share with council, however that is, just to kinda share what, what are things to look at, that, you know, evaluate that, like Councilmember Ginger said, I'm, I'm in favor of that, but.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments, council? Yes. Yes, sir. You got.
I think the map, mapping feature is valuable. It, it provides visibility to the public and the council, like what's going on in a particular area when we get a call or, you know, gets called. Look at C Click Fix, see what's been, see if there's other reporting the same thing in the neighborhood. Also, I like the email notifications. Everyone's coming in. We can quickly read those and see what the responses are from staff and give, give feedback or, or it actually gives us the ability to make comments ourselves. So that, that tracking and that visibility is important. The numbers are down a bit. I remember early on when we first implemented, we had lots of them. And, you know, attributed to it, the fact that, you know, the good feedback we were getting from the public at the time, that was new, everybody liked it. It was like, wow, that's things are starting to happen. And so we have found and fixed a lot of things. So I wanted to ensure that we keep that visibility to the public and the council so that we know what's going on. The way it was before, the annual system, it never got updated over a period of time. Things start to track and some of us on council never looked without C Click Fix, but I can tell you we had a lot of phone calls all the time. We never knew where to go with it. And if we don't know, then the public doesn't know. This is a, the, the, the front end of this is, is easy to say, okay, I got a pothole. Let me find that. Then it automatically goes to the right person. They get feedback, the individual gets feedback on. Should they chose to enter their email, we'll get feedback on it. This is the next step. This is who assigned to. We, we need that again. That comes down to visibility and accountability and tracking. But I'd like to see those features continue, to continue in whatever we consider to do. One thing I'd like to see stopped is think about marking a complete when it physically is not complete outfits being tracked and other, another thing that's just as visible, like potholes, for example, it's being prioritized along with the other potholes and stuff. And we've got a tracking system, a robust tracking system that's also visible with everybody. We don't have that thing. Then, well, so be it. Also, I think the front end has too many options. If we're only getting about 800 a year, then we don't need about 50 options. We could probably take a look at streamlining that running right down to things that are used most often and then just having other that covers, you know, the, the two or three percent that's out there that, you know, that have never been used. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon.
Okay, so if we're gonna add to the wish list, here's a couple of things I'd be interested in. Okay, so if we're going to add to the wish list, here's a couple of things I'd be interested in getting to know is the number of unique users, because we think we have a few frequent flyers. They're either really good at C Click Fix. So I'd be interested in that, and also the cost per case. Because $20,000 a year per, it's a good software, but is it right for us? So cost per case might be something that we want to look into, too.
But I'd also.
Councilmember Connerd, then Lampy.
I'd also want to make sure whatever alternative doesn't cost more than $20,000, if you got to hire a part-time person, just answer emails and answer phone calls and put it in an Excel spreadsheet and do all this stuff, that it doesn't cost more than $20,000.
Good point. Councilmember Lampy.
Yeah, just, whether the process works, I'll leave it up to you, Matt, to figure that all out internally and stuff. That's your, your area. Mine was more about making sure that when we get a, a request, a complaint, whatever you call it, that when we mark it complete, it's actually complete. And I use the, the example of a sidewalk. We say, hey, you need to put a sidewalk in, or you need to fix your sidewalk. We, as a city, we send them a letter, and as soon as we send the letter, we mark it complete. The sidewalk's not in place, the sidewalk's not fixed, but we're still marking it complete. So somehow we've got to track that thing all the way to true completion of, and implementation of, and correction of the problem. So that's all I got.
This is sort of a lesson learned whenever we add new technology, the annual cost to keep it maintained and such. I mean, who knew when we added this that it was a $20,000 bump every year, you know, cost every year? So just something we have to keep in mind because technology's, our use of it keeps increasing, which is great, but we got to keep the cost in mind.
All good.
All right, there you go, sir. Councilmember Gendrich, is there anything you'd like to share on July 3rd?
Happy Independence Day to the Muscatine community. What a great country we have.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Brokert.
I echo Councilmember Gendrich.
Way to go, maybe.
I know, it just happens very often.
Councilmember Connerd, don't ruin it. What, what do you got tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Louis?
Well, I wish everybody a safe Fourth of July. Please be careful out there using fireworks. We don't want to see any fingers, hands blown off and fires on people's houses because we're not using them respectfully. And that app is called Treat, and you can download it on the Apple iStore as well as any other downloading source. It's kind of fun, so.
Councilmember Gordon.
Well, I just want to call out those folks that watch us on TV, because surprising as it happens, I mean, we get recognized somewhere out in the neighborhood. I was at Menards shopping with my husband, and the cashier goes, you're Peggy. I'm like, yes, I watched the council meeting. And it's, every time somebody does that, it's still shocking and thank the, thank you cashier at Menards. But thanks to everybody else that sits through some of these and watches us and gives us happy feedback, too. So appreciate it.
Councilmember Osborne, you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
Nothing to say.
All right. Councilmember Lampy.
Well, I want to echo Mr. Gendrich's thing, so we all agree with you. Happy Fourth of July and celebrate sensibly. The other thing is, just to clarify on, if we're going to do an in-depth next, next week, yeah, that we would, it's, obviously we'd have the, the wash bay on there, we'd have the asset management, the stop signs, and is that it? Just those three, is that right?
Three's our limit.
Yep, okay. Three's our limit.
It's our new limit.
As of today, yeah.
Because, so we don't want to go by BB again and stuff, so, yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you. Cinda? Captain?
I'm behalf of the police department. I expect come Monday that we will have no incidences and everybody will have an enormously safe weekend.
That's right. And again, thank you for everything you do with your leadership. Appreciate it.
Yes, well done.
City Administrator.
I just have two things. I did get an email today that the lumber loft closing is set for 7/11 of '25, so next Friday. We should close on that property pending no issues. And then next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday morning, I am going to attend the Iowa City Managers Conference up in Decora in, in hopes of getting my continuing education hours for my certified managers' hours, so. Good things coming next week.
Nice community up there, yeah. And then just to kind of reiterate with tomorrow, can't believe it's already July 4th. 9:00 AM Children's Parade, great way for the kids to go out there and act like they're in a parade. I think it's pretty cool, and the police department helps out with that, too. They think, they think it's the coolest thing ever, having the lights on.
As the police that help out with the parade, they feel as happy as well.
If Ruben gets in a way, I apologize, by the way, that's my son.
We have a special seat for him in one of our squads. Right next to Dad, right?
That's right. From 9:00 to 3:00, we have a three-on-three basketball tournament, which is kind of, it's a new thing for the Fourth of July. Whitney Phelps and Eric are putting it on, I think that's really nice. From 3:00 o'clock to 8:00, we have the Almost Fireworks Fest, and again, City Council, City of Muscatine puts money towards this to make it a great event, so we, thank you guys for voting on doing such a thing as well. From 4:00 to 5:00, we have the parade, and that'll be nice. We have about 37 entries with multiple floats, if you will, per entry, so I think that's nice. Our parade marshals are five individuals, veterans, that didn't get an opportunity to get their diploma, and so they're part of the class of 2023, 2024, 2025. So they're going to be in Frank Ila's large Ford truck. They're going to get up there, so I think that'll be nice, we'll, we'll help them. And then 8:00, the Muscatine Symphony Orchestra, and I know Stephanie Romanoli's part of that, so that'll be nice, by the red brick building. And then 9:20 is where the big booms happen. So this will be the largest firework show that we've been told by J&amp;M Display in Muscatine history, so.
Awesome.
23 to 24 minutes, it should be fun. And, yeah, God bless America, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.